Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of City of Barristrop. I'd like to call to order and ask Mr. Johnson to give us opening prayer.
Governor, Father, I come at this time with a many thanks. Thanking you, Father, for your blessing you have bestowed upon each and everyone on the sound of my voice. You have blessed it all, both individually and collectively, and there's more than enough to say thank you, sir. Thank you, Lord, for everything, for our being itself. Thank you for our early morning horizon and start us on our day's journey. As we assemble here in this afternoon, Father, I ask you that you crown our head with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding of the business at hand for the city of Barristrop. Let us all be in agree with each other. Bless us all and keep us and protect us, and whatever we do here tonight, please, sir, let it be pleased unto thee and decent and in order. These are all blessings I think, in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen and thank God.
Amen.
And before we move on, I would like to get a moment of silent prayer for Greg Nolan. He was retired, he's retired Animal Control Officer. He passed. Mr. Berlin Pittman, brother of Clinton Pittman, he works for the Public Works Department. Melvin DeVall, brother of Jesse DeVall in the Recreation Department. And Jonathan Armarsha with my mother, and she passed. A moment of silent prayer, please. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Moore, would you give us a pledge?
Salute.
Pledge. Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, Ms. Goldman.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Armstrong.
Here.
Mr. Locke.
Present.
All present, Mayor.
Public comments as related to items on the agenda. Approval of previous minutes, regular meeting, July 9th, 2015.
I move, we accept the minutes.
Second.
Mayor.
We have a motion of Shaw, second by Mr. Locke. Any discussion? All for?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Special meeting, July 22nd, 2015.
May I make that motion?
We have a motion by Mr. Locke.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? All for?
Aye.
Against? Next, financial report. Mr. Shaw.
Mayor, we have reviewed the bills and claims for the month of July, and I recommend and move that we adopt these bills and claims.
So, Moore, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All for?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Resolution 151627 commending Greg Cheek upon retirement as a captain with the Barrister Fire Department. Chief Montgomery?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
Captain Cheek came to work for the Barrister Fire Department in 1989. He's done 26 years of service. Captain Cheek was a, I saw him sort of like a quiet leader. He didn't ever, he wasn't one to raise no fuss or anything, but he just came to work. He did his job. He didn't take off much. Anytime it was time to do something, you could always count on Captain Cheek. He was a wonderful man, and I tell you, the department is really gonna be bad off, a little worse off losing him. He's a professional painter by trade, so I'm pretty sure he's gonna be doing a lot of that now, so if any of y'all need your house or room painted, call Captain Cheek. He does just a wonderful job in matters he did as being a firefighter. So Greg, I just wanted to let you know that he's really gonna be...
Captain Cheek, this is a resolution where as Greg Cheek has paid for services for the city of Barristrop for 26 years, has deployed as an employee of the Barrister Fire Department, and whereas Greg Cheek has served under three mayors, Mayor Clinton, David Hawkins, Mayor Beddick, and Mayor Ophie Jones, he has served under three fire chiefs, Chief Tennyford, Chief Whittington Key, Chief Eric Montgomery, whereas Greg Cheek has capable of serving City of Barristrop since 1989 and on retirement after. Whereas that and Greg Cheek terminated his tenure as a Barrister Fire Department employee on retirement, August 15, 2015, therefore, now therefore, it be resolved by the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Barristrop and a public meeting held on August 13th, whether it be that they do give back a man, applaud and honor Greg Cheek for his devoted service, wife, and children, and encourage all citizens of the City of Barristrop to join them and express their great appreciation, great gratitude to his efforts. This resolved and ready for the passing of the 13th date of August 2015, and final vote being voted.
Mayor, don't forget to call for a vote.
Oh, on that resolution. Can I get a motion?
I make that motion, Mayor.
I second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All for?
Aye.
Against? Resolution 151609, an amendment and restatement of Resolution Number 1609 of 2015, adopted on April 9, 2015, as further amended on July 22nd, 2015, granting preliminary authority through the City of Barristrop, State of Louisiana, the city, to issue sewer revenue bonds in amount not exceeding $1,700,000 in one or more series for the purpose of financing the reconstruction and acquisition of improvements, extensions, relocations, and/or replacements to the sewer system of the city, seeking state bond commission approval, therefore providing for employment of bond counsel and municipal advisor, and providing for other matters and connections thereof. And this is Mr. Josh Leonard and Steven Nasaki.
This is just an amendment and restatement of the resolution that passed in April, originally being stripped to 3.5, and then made to go up to 4.11, you remember, that's why we came back July 22nd, did the amendment, just to keep it needs, and we don't have a resolution, and then two amendments do it, we amend it and restate that everything is all being placed with record, and that's what we consider. In addition, we did have to add that service reserve condition under our personal funds as a restatement purpose also.
This is that sewer money we apply for working on the sewer system.
May I can? I make that, go ahead. I make that motion, Mayor.
I second it.
We have a motion, by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Locke. Any discussion? All for?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Thank you. Let's see. Ordinance 154231, an ordinance authorizing the repeal of ordinance number 154230, and the issuing and sale of $1,700,000 sewer revenue bond, Series 2015, for the City of Barristrop, State of Louisiana, payable solely from the sewer revenue of the city, prescribing the form, fixing the details, and providing for the payment of principal and of interest on such bonds, and for the right of registered owner thereof, awarding the sale of such bonds to Southwest Securities Incorporated, authorizing a preliminary official statement, and providing for other matters related thereof. Mr. Nasaki, Mr. Leonard. Okay, this is the ordinance for the resolution we just passed at introduction. We'll have to come back and vote on it. Okay, in a public hearing, okay. There's no action need to be done on that, just introduction, right? Okay, thank you. Ordinance 154232, an ordinance authorizing the borrowing by the City of Barristrop, State of Louisiana, $1,500,000 by the issuing of revenue anticipation note, Series 2015, providing for the payment thereof, providing with respect to the rate of interest thereof, providing for pledge and dedication of taxes and other revenues of said city for security, and payment thereof of principal and interest, and other matters in connection thereof. Mr. Nasaki.
As we have done for the last eight years now, the city has issued these revenue anticipation notes, which is, in other words, cash flow borrowing, allows us to stabilize and normalize our cash flows through the end of the calendar year until we receive property taxes in the December-January timeframe. So it is not unlike what a lot of communities throughout the state, sheriffs, school boards do, in order to even out and level their cash flows. So what we've done is, as always, is a competitive issuance. We go out to banks in the area and solicit their proposals to find out, to find the lowest interest rate. The fortunate part is, we have always had multiple banks, fortunately, because of the, because of, you know, your judiciousness with regard to how you handle city finances, and also the fact that the property taxes are such as stable revenues. So for all of that, we solicited bids from area banks. We received four bids from Regions Bank, from Washtau Independent Bank, from Capital One, and from Sabine Bank, a little further over to the west. And Regions is our low bidder at an annual interest rate of 1.024, 1.0724 percent. So they are lower than, the highest bid is 1.91 percent from OIB, and the other two are in the middle. So for all of that, the least expensive source of funds is with Regions Bank. They were our low bidder last year at roughly the same interest rate, and 1.0724 percent is, you know, not very much higher than what they pay on CDs every same amount of time. So the nice part is, you know, they're doing it because they enjoy the relationship with the city, and, you know, they're making a couple of bucks on it, but not, you know, not, nobody's, they're not taking a lot of money, they're not leaving a lot of money on the table, pardon me. So for all of that, everything's in order with this. It is, as we have done in the past, and we recommend it's your consideration and adoption of this ordinance, allowing us to move forward and close end of the month, first part of September.
May I make that motion that we adopt this ordinance?
Please.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? All for?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Resolution 151626, authorizing the City of Barristrop to levy a fee for each service or transaction carried out as an operation of the Office of Motor Vehicles, CL Office, operating within the city. Ms. Goldman.
Cancel. The mayor received a letter from the state, and because they're changing to go to a six-year driver license, our revenue is gonna drop. We use the money there to pay the expenses of that building, so in order to help confiscate a little bit, they've gone up on their fees. We just have to pass this resolution. Right now, they're paying us $3 transaction, so they're telling us that we can ask for the max, and that's what we intend to do, so that way, hopefully, we can at least collect the same revenue for that line item in our budget that we've always done. So we would ask you to entertain a passing.
Ms. Goldman. What is the maximum of that?
I think the max is in the letter.
Four fifty?
Yeah, that's it. Four, four and a half dollars. So they're raising it by a dollar and a half.
And the reason they did this is because instead of a four-year license, they go into a six-year license, so you'll have less revenue, less traffic, less revenue, okay.
May I make that motion for the acceptance of Resolution 151626?
We have a motion by Mr. Locke for Resolution 151626.
I'll second that motion.
And a second by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? All for?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Ordinance 154233, an ordinance of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Barristrop, Louisiana, to amend and restate Section 16-3 of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Barristrop, authorizing the planning commission, when convened and exercising its powers as the zoning commission, to grant zoning variances for non-confronting use in locations under certain conditions, and addressing other related matters with respect thereof. Mr. Lawrence.
Mayor and members of the Board of Aldermen, back on July the 9th, this ordinance was introduced for consideration, and it followed the request that you received from Ms. Rogers on behalf of the Barristrop Zoning Commission, to authorize that body, in lieu of this body or some other regulatory body, to be able to grant zoning variances in specific instances where you have properties that exist in areas that have been there historically for quite some time, that are non-conforming uses, and that because of various reasons, economic and otherwise, it does not make sense or is not practical for them to be held and converted to a conforming use, and it would not be harmful to approve them to resume a non-conforming use. And so, in order to achieve those objectives of allowing variances to be granted in those areas where the particular property is deemed non-conforming, this ordinance is needed to amend Section 16-3C of the Code of Ordinances for the city, which currently defines the scope of the powers of the zoning commission. And the redefinition that's stated in this ordinance will expand the scope of the powers of the zoning commission, to give them that authority to be able to grant variances upon request. And so this is a more, I guess, efficient and expeditious manner of granting variances for non-conforming uses that fit in this very special category. Tonight, this is up for final adoption.
I make the motion?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All for?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Now, I am going to ask for amendment to the agenda. We have an engineering firm here. Mr. McManus, from McManus, near Dade Munro, and he wants to speak to you a little while about Eugene Ware Road.
I certainly appreciate it. I'd like to ask...
Hold on, let's see. Can I get a motion?
I make that motion, Mayor.
I second.
We got a motion, second, all for?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Okay, Mr. McManus.
Thank you so much. I'd like to ask Kate to join me. We're kinda working on this together, and I gotta do a little politicking. I may wanna run for office one day.
Yes, sir, yes. Thank you.
What do you think you might coming up? She's a lot older than me with something that's harder, but I think it'll be closer. What we're doing is, I'm Kevin McManus, McManus engineer, and we do the parish's engineering work, and one of the projects that the parish has applied for, and we have, is Eugene Ware Road. You can see a ray of that.
Yeah, I know what it looks like.
Well, the city limits between Barristrop and Forest, the parish is basically right along in here. What we'd like to do is, is not technically a joint venture between the city of Barristrop and the police jury, but it's all served in the same area. Okay, and if we can get funded, we got $600,000, we got a capital outlay to work on Eugene Ware Road. Eugene Ware Road is gonna, I'm gonna tell y'all something that you don't know, but you've got this first, I don't know how to pronounce the name of that building, it's Vegas. You know, we got Liberty Healthcare, the sheriff's got a place in there, and of course, the community college is right here. Part of what we were thinking about doing is if we could, if we could work with the city to make an application for Capital Outlay. We have good access in here, but this is good developable.
I'm sorry, there's 30...
Thirty-something acres.
Thirty acres in the, in...
In this tract area.
Fifteen, fifteen, and the garment factory.
So we have 30 acres here, 15 acres here, and of course, the garment factory is abandoned, as y'all well know.
And we need to, we need to stand by.
I really was very focused, Jennings didn't want really be in this deal. But what we'd like to ask council, it's really no cost to the town, but if we could work to try to get Eugene Ware Road fixed, if we could work to get this building taken down, and even purchase this property and get it in a developable, developable stage, we believe it could bring some economic development to the west side of town. And that's really kinda what we're asking for. Capital Outlay projects will be due the end of October, and we feel fairly confident that we can get some funding to make this whole area, what the jury is trying to do, and what the city could try to do to make this a really attractive place. I think everybody's aware that the little levee comes across here, and big trucks have trouble coming into Eugene Ware Road, and we've got that in the plan to try to moderate that, and make a lot nicer intersection, and try to keep a little bit of that traffic off of, is that camel?
Camel.
Camel coming in, keep, you know, some of the traffic maybe from coming in there and have more of it coming in over there. So that's kind of, and of course, Kate works for both, you know, both entities, and we just thought it might be by our collaboration between the police jury, the city, and the way I say, not develop, we might actually make that happen. We feel pretty confident we could. I say it's no out-of-pocket to the city to do the application, get it turned in, and try to shepherd it through. And I think y'all deal with Capital Outlay. If we get them in in October, then it'll go through the spring session, we'll have a new governor, we don't know who it is, what changes it'll make, but at least under the circumstances now, it'll go through the spring session, if we get it through the legislature, then it'll go to bond commission, probably September, October of next year, and then the money will be of, actually, real construction, and any, would probably start early 2017, realistically. Yet, you know, that's kinda, I mean, y'all been doing this, you know, the planning takes, y'all's gotta be a year or two ahead, and that's what we're asking the council to allow, allow us to work on this project.
Are you asking to buy the property, or what?
Eventually, yes. It really should be owned by, by a public body, so it could be, you know, it could be developed, get it cleaned up and developed.
Well, who owns the property?
We do. The city?
The city owns the garment factory.
I understand that, but I'm talking about that.
This piece is owned by Johnny Sanders out of Union Parish. He's Reverend Johnny Sanders, he used to preach at the West Side Church when they were here. But the property is on the market for a very reasonable amount, $120,000. One of the things that I had looked at, you know, we already are close to the city sewer, and there's already city sewer, and all of the infrastructure to support a, like a commercial park is already in place. And the, one of the disadvantages currently with the former gyro plastics building is truck access, getting in and out of there. And I know that we have the big liberty healthcare facility back here, and that better access and visibility from a road straight in from 165 would benefit that, that company as well. They do, this is an adolescent, and it's a behavioral center. So they have people come in from out of town, they have called me on occasion in the past years, and, you know, because people have a hard time finding the building. So this portion that was with the parish, we submitted before last October, and we got the $600,000 on the list. That doesn't mean we have it in pocket, but that we have it...
We're hoping October it'll go bond.
We have it on the list to improve this portion in here, and so what we're looking at is just moving this on forward with a city commercial park in here, if we can get the money to do that.
Just can you point to that pond?
Point to the pond?
Isn't that the pond, I think?
It's on the other side.
Yeah, here?
It's on the other side.
Okay. Well, you have, no, just a little, not the sewer pond, it's a little small pond on the side of the road.
Right.
Yeah, this, this pond.
Yes, okay. Are there any plans for that, or you go?
Well, you know, we had talked about that, because that's really, that thing could be dressed up, and it could be a very pretty area. I don't know how, I think some of the dirt was dug out there for the liberty healthcare. I don't know how deep it is, you know, sometimes if it looked like it was an old gravel pit, sometimes those old gravel pits are quite dangerous, because it's very steep, it goes steep into the water very quickly, so it's very easy for people to drown. And so, we might wanna look and see how the dirt was dug out, but I was looking at that, that it would be quite beautiful in there to kinda dress this up in there, and have, you know, maybe some walking trails or something like that.
May or may not, I could build too much around it, and there's possibility of some wetlands over here, because we'll, you know, we'll check, see if there are wetlands and floodplains, but we did talk about that the other day, of maybe trying to build walking trails and some other things that might be as steady, make it look...
You know, wetland parks, we've had some of those discussions, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure about the ownership of this, I haven't looked at the ownership of that. But I know that this piece is actively being marketed, I think $120,000 is a very good price. It doesn't mean if, it might, it may sell.
May sell, it's possible.
But there could be also a possibility of maybe getting an option on the property if we were pursuing it. So, Mr. Sanders, I've talked to him probably for the last three or four years, every time I would have a prospect for the old garment factory, I would call and ask him if the property was for sale... I would call and ask him if the property was for sale. It wasn't officially listed, so that makes it a little more easy for me to include it in a package, because he has it listed through a real estate agent now. But I have included this piece of property in with proposals on the, the garment factory in the past. And it makes it very attractive. If, we don't have the topography on this, but if you look at this, that this is all on the hill right here. So this is kind of the continuation of the hill. And then it drops off, it's a little lower back in here. And we do have this pipeline that runs across and runs in between, but the pipeline is not a large pipeline. And it has been used to supply gas, it was used to supply gas to the garment factory when it was there. So it gave them some options on, on gas purchase in that area. So I think that this is a good project for the west side to continue to, to do commercial development.
So who owns the, the plastic plant?
NBC Bank in New Orleans, and it's on the market for three hundred and forty thousand dollars. I think I'm quoting that correctly, three hundred and forty thousand dollars. I have submitted it recently to some possible prospects, but I, and, and I have used the, the possibility of the Capital Outlay fixing this road out there, because we know that it's difficult to back trucks in there. And so I have used that, that if, if we had a good prospect for that building, and we were gonna create a lot of jobs, then it would make it easier for us to get the Capital Outlay. I mean, they always take those things into consideration.
Economic development is, it has been big with, with the legislature. That's why we kind of, you know, even though we're gonna change governors, we still gonna have a lot of the same folks in Baton Rouge and their name, regardless of who the governor is. And they're, they're pretty strong on economics up. So we feel pretty comfortable we'll be able to, you know, make something happen out here. At least we don't give it our best shot until they.
We have a rather large city sewer line already going down Eugene Ware Road. I believe it's a fifteen inch sewer line, and we.
Pump station back in, back down in here.
And so I was told that, you know, what this building, the gyro plastics building, is currently on the city sewer, and that's good. But it's just, like I said, it was just something that we've been working on as kind of a, to kind of boost the development on the west side of Bastrop.
Doug, is there anything?
What would we have to do tonight?
Well, I was, I was listening closely about what the objective was. I heard, I heard something about purchase, I heard something about tear down. So I, I, and I'm not, I'm not sure. I was just continuing to listen to see what commitment is being requested.
Is this information, or are you wanting some?
This is, I think, information tonight.
Kind of a two-parter.
On some feedback.
And just, because it's the first time we've ever brought it up to y'all. We've got to make an introduction to doing this. But what we will need, whether it's this month or, or in the September meeting, is authorization to make an application to the state of Louisiana for capital outlay funding, which is grant funds too. And of course, this thing will go step by step like all projects. You know, we'll investigate if the property is still for sale, how much is for sale, if this building is worth saving or, or taken down, and just having this all as property. And that, that'll be a step by step process that will come to y'all each step of the way. The initial part is to request funding, and it'll be some of the planning money. It's just, for instance, we talked about over here, determining whether there's wetlands over there, what can we do with it, you know, what restrictions may be on it. So it's gonna be just a request to authorize us to turn in an application on behalf of the city of Bastrop. That's really the main thing we're asking for.
Now, is this, right now, we, we're hoping that we got six hundred thousand already asked for?
Yes.
Through the page.
Now, you're saying for a future request?
For the twenty sixteen seventeen legislative session.
Right, you just got to determine what that is.
And we made this application for Eugene Ware Road last year.
Yes.
To the police jury.
Okay.
It takes about a year if all goes well. You turn it in in October, and by the time you go a whole year, you may get money in October twenty sixteen. And then planning and construction, if we decide to do something in twenty seventeen, it's typically what it works.
So I guess, in the way I would think that we might, over the next month, and Doug, I don't know if there's an initial reading required on this to apply for capital outlay funds, but we need to get the wording, if we would look at the, doing something with the ditto building, not, well, I better call it the former garment factory, and, and this area, that we may be looking at planning money this go round, and then this might be a multi-year.
Yeah, it'd be.
This, this is gonna be a multi-year request. And so we would come back the next year with another phase to look and see what, what we might initially want to, you know, by that time, you may make a decision that we need to tear the ditto building down. I've, I've talked to Mayor Jones a number of occasions, and, you know, we've been close to selling this thing several times, but we just never quite get there. And so maybe it is time to look at demo in the building, or selling it, or salvage, or doing something so that we can convert, this is beautiful property in here. It's next to the community college. We just need to look and see what, what use we can put into this, because I know the city's probably carrying insurance on this building, and we still have to mow it. It'd still have to be mowed, but we need to look at, at converting it into something that's desirable.
And study money will answer all those questions as we move through this process. So, and you know, we don't have to make decisions really and truly in the next eight months or nine months once the money comes. And we will all be working and talking about it, making some unofficial plans. We wouldn't be making hard, fast plans insofar as what's gonna happen to this property. But we do know we want to make an application, assuming the mayor and the council are amenable, to apply for some money, try to do something out here in this whole area. That's, that's our goal, is try to dovetail the, hopefully, the money we give will improve Eugene Ware Road, make improvements out here, and, and have a, you know, pretty nice little park there.
Good.
Do a lot of things with it, so. What are y'all's feelings? Anybody, have any other questions, or do we feel like there's something y'all might be interested in pursuing? Or just, you know, kind of first blush, I know you don't know all the answers, but.
You, 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 go ahead, Doug.
Oh, well, yeah, I mean, I, I just wanted to ask, just so, so that we'd be clear. So Mr. McManus, it's an application to ask for capital outlay funding for?
Twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen.
And, and for that time period, for planning?
Planning and, I, the overall project would be planning and development of whatever name we come up with we afford. Planning and development. And development could be doing something with the building, tearing the building down, maybe the building sells.
Just don't know exactly what we're gonna do with it now.
Yeah, and, and because the six hundred thousand is just from this intersection to the city limits, then we have this boulevard in there in between the community college that could come in at a later time.
I think the city limits end after you pass the ditto building, but before you get to the prison?
Yes, right along the edge of the.
It's right.
Prison right in here, pretty much.
Well, it's the yellow line.
Yeah, yellow line is kind of the city, city limits there. About any other questions, or?
Oh, this was just the introduction, right?
And for you to.
For information.
They will, and if it's hard with y'all, if y'all think it's, and, and we'll talk back to the mayor in maybe the September meeting, y'all be thinking about if you want to move forward, and we, we need a resolution, because we have to send a resolution to Baton Rouge to be authorized to apply on behalf of the city. So we'll be looking, looking to come back in September and try to solidify that.
Okay.
Thank y'all very much, I certainly appreciate you.
Could I get a motion to a jury?
Move.
Second.
All for?